Good evening and welcome to the May 22nd, 2025, meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteer members, each appointed by the city council, and we are all volunteers. The Planning Commission is advisory to the city council for most items. The Planning Commission makes recommendations, and the city council has final decision-making authority. There are certain applications that the Planning Commission may approve or deny on its own. We have none of those items this evening. For each item, there will be a staff report. There will be a chance for the applicant to speak, and then any chance for the member of the public to provide testimony on any items that require a public hearing. First item of business this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, to start this evening out, we have one member of the Planning Commission who is going to recuse himself from item two, and therefore I am going to make a motion to reorder the agenda. We will still start with item one. We will then move to item three, which is a study item, item four, a study item, and finish out on item two, which is a study item. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And on to item one, which does have a public hearing. This is a privately initiated code amendment to allow health clubs as a permitted use in the CS1 zoning district. And Planner Hespec, you have the staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. So, the first item, like the chair stated, is a privately initiated city code amendment to allow health clubs as a permitted use in the CS1 zoning district. Oh, okay. Sorry, my PowerPoint just exited out completely. One second. Okay, hopefully it works this time. Okay. So, outlined in red is the specific property where the health club, which is proposed to be a jujitsu academy, is proposed. This property is zoned CS1 commercial services and guided community commercial. It's just north of Interstate 494 and east of Highway 100. You can see on the right, there's a floor plan, and 6,156 square feet of the building are proposed to be used for the health club, with the other part of the building being industrial. As far as parking goes, health clubs require one parking spot per 250 square feet, and for this instance, it would require 25 spots, and there's 42 onsite. This image shows the parcels zoned CS1 in red. There are 38 parcels in the CS1 zoning district. And so I'm just gonna read a little bit of what the intent of the CS1 zoning district is. It's to provide for the development of service use near freeway interchanges, as well as the provision of food, lodging, automotive service, motor vehicle fuel, and other goods and service as the principal use within the district. However, other uses which are interrelated to those uses are appropriate. So, staff feels that health club is interrelated to the listed uses permitted in this district. Additionally, most of the parcels kind of shown here are located along 494, which provides fewer traffic concerns. Now, you can see the definition of the health club. So, we have a pretty expansive definition for health club. It's what you would typically think of as your big box gym, but could also be smaller gyms or studios. And the specific property for tonight that the applicant is looking at would fall under the martial arts category in this definition. This map, all the colored parcels are showing the parcels that have allowances for health clubs in the city. And then the table kind of on the bottom right shows that there's a pretty expansive list of where health clubs are permitted, a permitted limited use, or permitted when located near certain types of roads. Health clubs are viewed as having minimal nuisance conditions, and therefore staff feels comfortable adding them as a permitted use to the CS1 district. And so with that, there are no specific findings for this type of application, but staff finds this change to be appropriate based on the intent of the CS1 zoning district, and staff is recommending approval through the following motion on the screen. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Hespec, as I read through the staff report, it seemed to me that a health club of this nature really isn't in conflict of anything. So, for the people watching at home, why don't we just allow it everywhere?
Chair, Commissioner Cookton, I'll kind of give my best answer to that. So, one reason could be that we do want to save certain types of buildings for other uses. Like, I know we have protected industrial zones, which are meant for specific manufacturing or industry. Yeah, I think also, you know, we don't allow it in residential zones for specific reasons. Yeah, and I don't know, Planning Manager Johnson, if you want to add anything to that.
Planning Manager Johnson, anything to add?
I think Emily did a good job. The only thing I would add is that, you know, certain commercial districts are more intended to fulfill development goals around mixed-use development or higher intensity, more vertical development. Some health clubs necessitate access to an arterial collector road due to higher traffic volumes at certain times. So, for example, the B1 Office zoning district, which is a more restricted, more limited commercial zoning district, might not be a good fit for a health club. But overall, I recognize and agree with the Planning Commissioner's question that overall, we do want to promote these uses. They do benefit the community in a variety of ways.
Any additional questions for staff? All right, seeing none, would the applicant like to speak on this item?
I think Emily covered everything, but if you'd like to ask me any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer, as far as our business intent or...
If you wouldn't mind coming up to the mic and just introducing yourself, that would be great.
Sure. My name is Damian Hertz. I'm the owner of 7930. We're also looking to purchase the building, and I'd be the tenant that would be inside the building.
Questions for the applicant? I have a question.
Sure.
The use that is directly abutting this proposed use, just talk a little bit about your relationship with them, the conversations.
The other tenant?
Yes, the other tenant.
The other tenant is actually Edina High School. They do their high school planning for their events and their graduations. So, they use it very sporadically. They're in there a few times a year. If they have an event for the students, they'll go in there and do decorations and that sort of thing. It's mostly warehouse space.
And you've had conversations, you've been in conversation with them?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? Right, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I guess I will officially open the public hearing. Any members of the public who wish to testify on this item can come up and sign in and introduce themselves. Planning Manager Johnson, is there anyone online who wishes to contribute? No?
Chair Albrecht, I believe everyone online is city staff.
All right. Seeing no one in the room who wishes to testify, and no one online looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. On to discussion. Commissioner Cookton.
Seems pretty straightforward, Madam Chair. Seems like a good use and a good use of an existing building. Happy to have a new tenant moving here, and I'll be supporting this.
Yeah, and I will echo that as well. My only hiccup with this, and it's not enough to sway my decision on it at all, is the idea of a nuisance in the health club area. I know that there's been... I've heard of some gyms going into multifamily properties where the music or weights or things like that makes a lot of noise. This seems like a much more appropriate fit. But the idea that health clubs probably don't have any nuisance, we probably should be careful of that too, because I know saunas are listed as well. That could be also an issue with the greater interest in sauna-ing around our state. Any other items for any other discussion? All right, anyone willing to make a motion? Commissioner Cookton.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend the city council adopt an ordinance to allow health club as a permitted use in the CS1 commercial service zoning district, thereby amending Chapter 21 of the city code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. This item will move on to the June 30th meeting of the city council as a public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, as we discussed earlier, we are going to move to item three on the printed agenda, which we will call item two, which is consideration of the approval of the May 8th meeting of the Planning Commission meeting synopsis. And I don't have in front of me who was and wasn't there.
Chair Albrecht, all members were present.
All members are present, excellent. Anyone willing to make a motion? Commissioner White.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Planning Commission meeting synopsis from May 8th, 2025, as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item three, which is item four on the printed agenda, is the Planning Commission Policy and Issues Update. Planning Manager Johnson, you have this item.
Thank you, Chair Albrecht. I'll just provide an upcoming snapshot of Planning Commission meetings before you. On June the 5th, there'll be a public hearing for the Sign Code Lookback Ordinance Part II. That's the second part of your previous discussion on updates to the city's sign ordinance. The second item on that agenda will be an update from Port Authority staff on their commercial nodes strategy. It is a listed project on the Planning Commission work plan. The Port Authority Commission recently got an update about the city's efforts to try and make improvements and investments at some of the city's commercial nodes. On June the 12th, a study item is planned to discuss the Normandale Lake District Plan and guidance therein to construct a pedestrian bridge over Normandale Boulevard at the Normandale and 84th intersection. So, that presentation will be provided by the city's traffic and engineering staff and supported by Planning Supervisor Dakota Caston Day. On the June 26th meeting agenda, Drili Navarro from the city's planning and HRA staff will deliver the annual housing report to you at that meeting, as well as provide a presentation about the HOA study, which was another listed project on the work plan this year. So, that is what we have for you on the upcoming Planning Commission, next three Planning Commission agendas.
Thank you. Anyone have any items for discussion? All right, I will add, we did interviews with the Planning Commissioners or folks who are interested in serving on the Planning Commission as of July 1 last evening. There were a lot of really fantastic candidates, a lot of really great folks raising their hand to volunteer for the city. So, we definitely appreciate that as my term is ending at the end of June. And I'm happy to leave it in the hands of some really great LEs candidates. That item will be on the city council agenda for June 2nd to officially appoint those that we have recommended. Obviously, the city council makes the final decision, but we look forward to welcoming the new folks to the commission when that happens. Commissioner Cookton?
Madam Chair, if you're ready to move on to the next item?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I would like to recuse myself from this item due to a change in circumstances starting in 2025 and the foreseeable future.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Cookton. TBD. He can decide where he goes. Okay. All right. Item four, which is item two on the printed agenda, is a study item. It is about the airport parking study and Planning Supervisor Centenario. You have the staff report.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. Yeah, so we have, we've been working on a study for airport parking. And it might seem like a mundane topic, but it's a really complicated issue that the city has been dealing with or not dealing with for well over 30 years. And so, there's a lot of pre-existing conditions in history that we could go into, but we're choosing not to, because we'd be here for hours. So, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna talk about the goals of the study, which were adopted back in November. Some details, abridged details of existing conditions. Then we'll get into what our plans say that are related to airport parking, both remote airport parking and hotel airport parking, where kind of we have two distinct uses that we're gonna talk about. Of course, there's benefits and challenges to airport parking. We'll talk a bit about national and local dynamics, summarize some of the outreach that we've done, and then provide staff's recommendation, and then we can discuss. So, from the beginning, we had several goals of the study that were ultimately adopted in the scoping document. But we wanted to better understand the existing conditions and future interest in remote airport parking. We're familiar with the two main remote airport parking operators currently in the city, Park and Go and Park and Fly. They've been in operation for quite a long time. But they're not the only businesses that wish to operate this type of facility. We wanted to determine the appropriateness and compatibility, review guidance from the city's comprehensive plan, and then also the associated plans, mainly the South Loop District Plan as it pertains to airport parking. We wanted to learn more about how other communities deal with airport parking, whether they are permissive, prohibitive, or somewhere in between, and then determine how airport parking should be regulated in the future, including where it's allowed, whether there's a need for additional or more prescriptive standards. So, again, should we allow this, should we be more permissive? And if we are, well, what does that look like? So, we'll touch on existing conditions. Again, I mentioned Park and Go just a minute ago. And so, both of the existing remote airport parking facilities are in our South Loop District. So, that's roughly east of Highway 77 and south of 494 and east of the Mall of America. So, this is the area that we anticipate and have seen very high-intensity land use, and that's where we want to continue to see urban growth. But in terms of just some of the basic characteristics of Park and Go, it's about 12 and a half acres, roughly 1,500 stalls, entirely surface, and it's been operating, excuse me, in operation since 1992 through two different types of entitlements, but the name changed. It started out as what's called a teacup or temporary conditional use permit. And then I think in around 2009, that entitlement turned into an interim use permit. And so, since 1992, that's been operating under these temporary approvals. In 2019, we tried something different, where interim use permit approvals were tied to development milestones, meaning you'll get approval to continue your operation, but under a certain timeline, you're expected to perform redevelopment. That obviously didn't materialize due to a variety of factors. But Park and Go's last interim use permit expired in October, but that was, you know, we have a moratorium in effect, which stayed any sort of enforcement action on that expiration. And before that expiration, Park and Go did apply for a five-year interim use permit, and that was denied by the city council. Going on to Park and Fly, I think they were acquired by the parking spot, and so I think it's called the Parking Spot by Park and Fly. We're just gonna call it Park and Fly. About 12 acres. This facility has about 1,100 surface parking stalls, and then about 1,000 structured stalls. So, you can see on the image here, that parking structure along American Boulevard East is part of the remote airport parking facility. Park and Fly is a little bit older, 1988. This is the site that originated this type of use within the city. The parking structure was built in 1994, and originally, the intent was to support an office tower. So, the parking, the first three levels was structured parking, and then an office tower on top of it. Obviously, the office tower's never built, and it's been used for remote airport parking all along. Similarly to Park and Go, in 2019, the IUP was conditioned on development milestones. Park and Fly did go through a lot of development review, and they did have a preliminary development plan for a four-phase development, and received approval for the first phase, and was very close to getting permits to start construction on that. But due to a lot of uncertainty, that didn't happen. And this IUP expires August of 2027. So, the other, so in addition to remote airport parking, we were tasked with researching and coming up with a strategy for hotel airport parking. And hotels are obviously big business in Bloomington. We, there are 49 hotels in Bloomington and over 9,500 hotel rooms. So, that's a big part of Bloomington's economy. And we don't know the exact proportion, but many, if not most of those hotels have some sort of stay and park and fly package, where you stay a day or one overnight, and you're allotted a certain number of overnights for parking. The type of package varies between the hotels, but all you really need to do is to go to the Bloomington Travel and Tourism site, and their stay and fly page is, I believe we were told, it's the most visited page on their website. So, this is a use that's been in existence since there was MSP and hotels, and it's currently, for the most part, not permitted. So, it's a use that is operated widely in the city, and this study was meant to try to address that inconsistency. And I will pass it on to Planning Manager Johnson.
Thank you, Mike. So, as per any kind of key land use question or discussion that we have around land use policy, we're always gonna look back to our comprehensive plan and any relevant district plans that provide us guidance in our decision-making. As you know, or as I often say, the comprehensive plan is really the 30,000-foot view. What is the broad land use, housing, transportation policy the city should be pursuing at a high level for the community? District plans provide more than 10,000 square foot view and can focus in on very more specific recommendations as it pertains to land use policy or infrastructure or other things along those elements. So, just providing a quick delineation of kind of how those two different policy documents work in concert with one another. So, there is a lot of, there is a lot of content in both the city's comprehensive plan and the South Loop District Plan that can provide relevant guidance as to this policy question. So, it's important to share that context. You know, I think it's important, I know we're talking about a few specific sites as part of this study too, but good to just set the context in terms of what the city's land use policies and policy guiding documents say as it relates to the use. So, the Bloomington land use element in the 2040 comprehensive plan focuses on a specific redevelopment strategy. The general principles of that redevelopment strategy as it pertains to remote airport parking are on the slide before you, but capitalizing on regional infrastructure, certainly Interstate 494 qualifies as that. Blue Line light rail transit is an essential component of that. Sanitary sewer capacity, roadway infrastructure that the city has provided. These are all elements of infrastructure that help either enable growth or restrict it. So, that's a key principle in the city's land use element. Throughout the plan, both in the land use, housing, and transportation elements, you'll see a consistent theme or thread around transit-oriented development, trying to emphasize the importance of coordination between land use planning and transportation planning, and trying to locate the most dense, the most intense uses, particularly housing, but mixed-use development as well in close proximity to light rail transit. So, that's a consistent theme in multiple of the chapters in the comp plan. Finally, Bloomington historically has been very welcoming of growth and development. We want to see especially the highest value and most visible sites in Bloomington developed in an intense fashion with higher densities, higher floor area ratios. And so, that third bullet on the list really is trying to capture that element of developing underutilized sites. In addition to that, oftentimes, there's always typically land use conflicts or sites or uses that don't align well with the city's development goals. So, that is the point about redeveloping incompatible land uses. We'll talk more about that with the district plan. Regarding future transit station area growth, it's also important to note that, given the area of greatest demand for parking, airport parking uses, of course, is gonna be in proximity to MSP Airport. And given that the Blue Line light rail transit is also right in that location, it's also important to note that the Metropolitan Council's regional plans also provide some guidance around land use around light rail transit. Currently, the average minimum density expectation around, within one-half mile of a light rail transit stop is 25 units per acre for a community of Bloomington's designation. We did connect with Metropolitan Council staff, and that is anticipated to rise to a minimum average density of 35 units per acre when the next system statement is released later this fall. So, that's feedback that the Metropolitan Council has provided us. Next slide, Mike? So, as I mentioned, you know, a lot of the elements of the land use chapter coordinate or sync up with policy guidance in the housing and transportation elements as well. So, within the comp plan, certainly, the housing element guides the city to identify opportunities for new housing and mixed-use developments, and particularly trying to facilitate higher density and mixed-use development near transit. That's a component of the housing element. And then, as I mentioned before, within the transportation element, land use planning and transportation planning work best when done in sync. And so, it's not surprising that the transportation element calls for the coordination of these efforts, and how that is reflected in this particular situation is ensuring, again, to that point of transit-oriented development, that the highest... that the highest densities and highest intensity uses are, are located within proximity to transit. Next slide, Mike. Thank you. So moving on to the district plan, Mike mentioned that the South Loop District is bounded by the Minnesota River on the south, I four ninety-four on the north, Trunk Highway seventy-seven on the west side. So as I mentioned, the comp plan is really the thirty thousand square foot view. The city adopted the district plan in twenty twelve. Why, why adopt a district plan? A district, a district plan can really dig more at that ten thousand-foot level to get into the specific elements of a particular neighborhood or a particular area. This is of particular interest in the case of the South Loop District Plan, given the Port Authority's history and enabling legislation to do economic development work within the South Loop District. So that's an important part of the story. But in addition to that, a district plan can make specific land use policy recommendations. It can include rezoning specific properties within the district. It can inform significant investments in public infrastructure. And that's reflected in the Lindau Link. Lindau Link is a direct result or outcome of the South Loop District Plan, the creation of Lindau. And so the district plan, I'll get into the specific goals and vision here in a minute, but the, the, the plan has four signature elements, it calls. Twenty-fourth Avenue, Lindau Link, which I mentioned, the bluff edge, obviously respecting the important resource that the Minnesota River is to this area. But that fourth signature element is the thirty-fourth and American Neighborhood. And this is currently the area around Bloomington Central Station and the surrounding area. And the intent of the district plan is really to create a dense urban neighborhood with high-density residential uses in this area in order to take best advantage of light, light rail transit in close proximity. So these are the signature elements of the plan. So getting to the vision, so forgive me to read off a slide, but just the highlighted elements to us are kind of the most important key language. And important, this is just all-important context for the sake of this discussion tonight. But transform South Loop from a dispersed suburban commercial area into a walkable urban area, neighborhood. I'll highlight that walkable component and urban. So the goals included building on the district's unique mix of assets, mitigating its disadvantages, transform the district's densities and characters from suburban to urban, accelerate the district's development, and create a sustainable district. So get digging into that a little bit further, what do we mean by some of those things? So in terms of leveraging the district's assets, certainly the key asset that it has would be light rail transit and bus transit. It's the first listed asset in the district plan. It also talks about density and character, trying to, trying to stimulate the district's density and character in terms of moving it towards urban. What does that mean? It means creating a more walkable environment. Suffice to say, low-intensity, low-density uses that involve lots of surface parking obviously do not align well with that particular goal. And then finally, accelerating the district's development. That really connects with a lot of the things that I've already spoken about, so I won't repeat that. But one thing that is an important element of the South Loop District is that it's really striving for a sense of place. And that has been informed by all the creative placemaking work that the city has done in the South Loop District. But also just in terms of when walking around, what are the uses that really support that sense of place? And then on the standpoint of a sustainable district, this really comes out in a couple forms. One is just stormwater management and quality. Obviously, the more impervious surface within the area that's treated or not treated in a more environmentally friendly way kind of runs against that goal. In addition to that, large amounts of surface parking are known to create urban heat island effect as well. So there's some elements of traditional horizontal parking that run counter to some of these goals. And it's hard to deny those facts. I will say that the characteristics of different remote airport parking uses across the country are different and really do go on a spectrum of a range, ranging from the lowest density of just pure surface parking all the way to some operations and facilities that are much more concentrated and use land in a more efficient manner. So just thinking about the goals of both the comprehensive plan and the district plan, these are some of the elements at play. We also thought, in addition to providing this guidance from the comp plan and the district plan, that it would be helpful for the context of the conversation to, from staff's perspective, of course, the public also has, can certainly, you know, add their voice to this process when appropriate. But there, there are benefits and challenges of airport parking uses. It would be unfair to not acknowledge some of the benefits that do exist to some of these operations in Bloomington and elsewhere. So the benefit is service availability. So certainly, some Bloomington residents utilize these services. There probably are more customers from further away than Bloomington, but certainly they have local customers who make use of this service, as well as businesses certainly too. It's important to note that there's two, two existing successful businesses when you're talking about the remote airport parking facilities. In addition to that, I think it's clear from the Bloomington Visitors and Conventions Bureau that this use also does support the economic health of the city's hotel industry. So that's also important to acknowledge. The third one, and maybe one that we haven't talked about as much in the past, but the, the opportunity or the potential opportunity of this use to help finance other associated priority development that is in line with the, the district plan's vision in this area. That could be destination entertainment, that could be affordable housing, that could be dense housing, it could be mixed-use development, it's a number of different things that the potential revenue could support. So those are the benefits that staff sees. In terms of the challenges, I just talked about the inconsistency of the use with the comp plan and the district plan. Overall, lack of development intensity is a challenge from staff's perspectives. In, in staff's view, it also disincentivizes future development. When you're gaining a significant amount of revenue from surface parking, it's hard to take that next step or want to utilize a site for any other use except the current operations. Misalignment with investments in public infrastructure. Of course, the public has expended significant dollars to create light rail transit and roadways and sewer capacity in these areas. I mentioned the environmental, potential environmental concerns of large scale of surface parking and then impacts to Bloomington roadways. I mean, certainly, a lot of trips are generated from these sites, and the roadways are effectively built to handle that, and to handle that. But it also adds to vehicle emissions in the area as well, tying back to the sustainability piece. So I'm going to turn it to Dakota Caston Day. He's going to provide an overview of our research of airport parking in the United States and local jurisdictions, as well as some additional dynamics in Bloomington.
Yeah, thanks. This has been a collaborative effort, so just going to switch it up a little bit. So not, you're not listening to one person talk the whole time. So I'll just highlight again, you know, some of the conversations that we had with local stakeholders and again, kind of summarize some of these broader dynamics and how other airport communities compare. So looking at parking across the U.S., both of the airport parking providers in the city did their own kind of code analysis, looking at all the cities that they operate in, kind of seeing if it's a permitted or conditional use. So that was included in your, in the staff report and in the packet. We as staff just looked at kind of eight cities that we felt were kind of similar in Bloomington in the sense that the airport is relatively close to the urban core and a little bit more landlocked in terms of future expansions to kind of compare it to MSP. And so looking at, in the list that was provided by both of the airport parking providers, as well as the eight that we looked at here, in most cases, the airport parking was either a permitted or conditional use. And so Bloomington was really kind of the, the unique or oddball out in that we have it as an interim or temporary use. Everywhere else really has it permitted or conditional. And five out of the eight that we looked at do require some additional performance standards. And usually, when that is the case, it related to some kind of landscaping and screening from adjacent properties, as well as providing architectural features on any parking structures in those facilities. Looking at MSP Airport a little closer, on the Metropolitan Airport Commission, or MAC, manages about thirty thousand public parking stalls, as well as some rental parking stalls. And then there are other parking areas on the airport as well, but those are typically managed and operated by the individual airlines. So we're not talking about that. But in terms of kind of the public parking structures and parking at the airport, there's just a little over thirty thousand stalls. In the airport's twenty forty long-term plan, they do call for improvements in expanding parking at the airport. Some of this involves expansion of parking, particularly at Terminal Two, and redeveloping the USPS postal site for more parking. All of that to help the green and gold ramps at Terminal One are reaching their end of useful life and need to be redeveloped. So they, I think what they call in the plan is for the expansion at Terminal Two, the redevelopment of that postal site, to then be able to accommodate the parking that will be lost during the time that the green and gold ramps would be removed. And then that site would be redeveloped with some additional parking, as well as some other airport-related services at that site. So just kind of a dynamic to kind of keep in mind. And then as well, all of the off-airport parking shuttle operators are charged a trip fee every time that they enter Terminal One or Terminal Two. And so in twenty twenty-four, MAC estimated that there were over one hundred and nineteen thousand trips from the two remote airport parking facilities in Bloomington, and that resulted in approximately five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in revenue to MAC. We also looked at other airport parking facilities in our region. Then we identified three. So first is the Shepherd Road Airport Parking Facility in St. Paul. That provides both structured and open lot parking. It's been a long pre-existing use that is legally non-conforming to current St. Paul standards. When we were talking with staff at St. Paul, this is Zone T-three, your traditional neighborhood. It does allow a commercial parking facility as a conditional use, but with specific performance standards. And so parking must be either underground or in a structure, and then it must include a certain percentage of non-parking uses on the site. So any redevelopment or expansion at Shepherd Road Airport Parking would be required to comply with current St. Paul zoning code standards. But again, the existing facility there can operate as it is and is legally non-conforming. Another identified just was the Easy Airpark in Eagan that provides around seventeen hundred surface parking stalls. It was approved through a conditional use permit for Phase One in nineteen eighty-four and then Phase Two in nineteen eighty-six. And so that facility continues to operate as it was approved back in the eighties. The city of Eagan does not currently permit commercial parking facilities, so no new facilities are allowed in the city, but this one can continue to operate according to its conditional use permit. And then finally, the Southwest Transit also provides remote airport parking at their Southwest Station Park and Ride in Eden Prairie. This was a new service that began in March of this year. And they also provide, Southwest Transit provides a bus service along the I four ninety-four corridor with a multiple stops in Bloomington. And then their express route goes from the Park and Ride to the Mall of America to the airport. And they have a, allow, I think, a five-dollar fee, five-dollar-per-day fee, if I'm not mistaken, to provide parking there. And talking with Eden Prairie staff, they identified that parking as a permitted accessory use to their existing parking facilities and transit services at that site. And then finally, just wanted to highlight some additional interest in remote airport parking in the South Loop District beyond kind of the two existing facilities. So the Mall of America has indicated some interest in their east ramp to provide a remote airport parking facility and collaborating with Metro Transit to promote transit use between the mall and the airport. And that was also attached to the, your packet. Thirty-six oh one American Boulevard East and their existing parking structure have shared interest to be able to use the revenue from remote airport parking to fund improvements to the parking structure and then to also help support the conversion of the Riverview Office Tower into an affordable housing development. And that concept was also provided in the packet. And then at Park and Go itself, which is west of thirty-fourth Ave, has also submitted concepts showing kind of permanent structured remote airport parking on the northern half of their site and then showing non-parking uses on the southern part of their site. I think that's what I got.
So before we get to kind of the recommendations or where, where we want to go with the study, we just wanted to touch on some of the outreach that we did. And the bulk of the outreach were meetings and discussions with stakeholders and other communities. So here's a list of all the folks that we met with, in some cases, multiple times. But that ranged from property owners, Mall of America, Park and Go, Park and Fly, McGough Development, the catering management, to other cities, like Dakota mentioned. We had a lot of discussions with other cities to kind of discuss how they manage airport parking. That was Eden Prairie, Eagan, St. Paul, Richfield. Of course, we're talking to our colleagues here at the city of Bloomington. Obviously, the legal division has had a large role in the study. But then we've also discussed with, discussed the study with MAC, MAC staff, to having a better idea of what their plans are, what they envision, and if they wanted to provide any feedback on the study. And, you know, they, they pretty much kept it to what's available in their plan. And lastly, we've, of course, we, we have the Metropolitan Council, they're a regional entity, so we wanted to get their feedback too on how this study relates to their long-range vision and goals. So where we go from here, in, and we, we went into some detail in the report. And, you know, staff has our recommendation, but there's really a spectrum of policy options from less restrictive to more restrictive. And the less restrictive is just to say, this is a permitted use. It's, it's by an airport. This use has been around for, in the city of Bloomington, well over thirty years. Let's just make it permitted. And that would be the, arguably, the least restrictive approach. On the other hand of the spectrum, you have just outright prohibiting this use and then trying to figure out what do we do then with these existing businesses? Because they're going to want to continue to operate. And then there's somewhere in the middle. And that middle ground is where staff sees the best options. And I just want to emphasize what we recommended in the staff report is a significant departure from the city's approach or stance until now, frankly, where the idea was that these uses, these uses, namely, remote airport parking should no longer exist over time in the city of Bloomington. And that approach has not been successful so far. And so we wanted to try and find a middle ground that we felt could work. And so just touching on remote airport parking first, because arguably, I'd say that is a more complex issue. And that is to have some allowances for remote airport parking on a permanent basis. And just to be clear, what we're talking about right now are the HXR and CX-two districts. Those are two districts that are only in the South Loop District. For example, the CX-two, that's the Mall of America campus, the several properties of the campus. And then HXR, that zoning district centers around Bloomington Central Station and that thirty-fourth and American Neighborhood that Nick talked about. And so what we want to try and do, at least staff's recommendation, is to allow the existing remote airport parking facilities to operate on a permanent basis, subject to performance standards. And that could be done through a conditional use permit, in addition to performance standards adopted in city code. What we, what we could do is differentiate between existing facilities, meaning Park and Go and Park and Fly, from new facilities, like a remote airport parking facility at the Mall of America, for example. There could be a differentiation with the understanding that these facilities, the existing facilities have been in existence for quite some time and maybe some different treatment between existing and future is, is a good idea. We do want to, in terms of new facilities that don't currently, aren't currently in operation, it's our recommendation that we are limiting them to within existing parking structures. What we don't want to see happen is any sort of proliferation of remote airport parking. A proliferation really, we, we think would just be inconsistent with the land use guidance in the comp plan and the South Loop District Plan. So under this scenario, would allow airport parking and existing parking structures for newly established facilities. And how that could happen is if it's an existing parking structure, chances are that that parking supply is used for other things, like the mall, like office buildings or hotels. And so that, that owner or operator would have to demonstrate that there's excess parking supply that could be used for remote airport parking. And under this scenario, we believe that we should not have, that we should prohibit remote airport parking And under this scenario, we believe that we should not have, that we should prohibit remote airport parking in new parking structures other than the two existing operators. Of course, all this, all these options, there's literally hundreds of different alternatives that we could discuss. And hopefully, we'll be getting some guidance from you tonight. So moving on to some potential performance standards. And this is, if we are going to allow remote airport parking, what does that look like? How could that be implemented? And what's in bold on the, on the screen are some of the, what we believe are the key elements of, key performance standard elements that we'd like to incorporate in any sort of code amendment. And that could be where parking structures could be located. For example, if you recall in the Park and Go development concept, you saw a parking structure on the north end of the property along 494. That arguably is a better option because it's farther away from the transit stop and it's along 494 where there's tremendous vehicular traffic, noise, emissions, et cetera. Whereas opening up development for the south end of the site, which is immediately adjacent to transit, and that structure could be kind of like a buffering element. Minimum development area, limiting or requiring a certain amount of non-parking related development, like residential uses, hospitality, entertainment, to be designated within a site. And similar to that, what we do not want to see is a continued substantial amount of just surface parking on-site. We think there probably would be some, just there's, there are vehicles that have to maneuver. There are shuttles that might have height restrictions. So we think there might be some very minor elements of surface parking. But our idea in our recommendation is that the majority of the parking should be in a parking structure, not on the surface. And then, of course, there are a variety of enhancements that can be done to structured parking, whether that is vegetation, materials, screening, solar, renewable energy. There's a tremendous number of options that could, I guess, lessen the visual impact of a, of a parking structure. And then the, the last three bullets, you know, there's, we could, we could discuss different intensity requirements for development. We could even apply a buffer relative to MSP Airport. Although, you know, some of these standards might overlap. And then, of course, we could deal with some of the environmental considerations with stormwater management landscaping. So there's, I guess the point is there are a lot of different types of standards that we could think about if we want to allow remote airport parking on a permanent basis. So I also wanted to touch on hotel airport parking. So again, we have over 9,500 hotel rooms in the city of Bloomington. Many, if not most, of these hotels operate some sort of stay, stay and fly package. And so our recommended approach here is to consider hotel airport parking as a permitted accessory use. It pretty much acknowledges what's currently going on in Bloomington to date and has been for decades. And so what a permitted accessory use is that it's subordinate and clearly and customarily incidental to the principal use, meaning a hotel. The hotel is the principal use, parking is customary, customarily incidental to a hotel. However, again, talking about this desire to not see proliferation of parking, we think in that instance, there should be a maximum hotel parking supply. That's not something that the city of Bloomington has. We are more of a minimums-based approach in terms of parking supply. But what we wouldn't want to see is a hotel purchase of an adjacent site solely for the purposes of hotel airport parking. So we think a maximum parking supply should be instituted. And then we can discuss, well, what is that number? Because ultimately, it's, it's a number. And then also, this isn't, this can't be successful without enforcement. We have had instances where hotels were parking vehicles on the grass or in fire lanes or in other areas that just created a safety hazard. That's, that is to be expected when things get busy, but enforcement is necessary to try and keep that in check. So now comes the hard part, in terms of discussion. And so I'll pose these, there's these questions, and these were, these were items in the staff report. But these are things that we want to be thinking about as we consider, well, what, what do we do now? And so given the guidance in the COT Plan and the South Loop District Plan, to what degree is remote airport parking compatible with the city's long-term vision and goals? So that's question number one. Two is whether or not compatible, in what form and where could remote airport parking be accommodated? And then third, what are potential, potential remote airport parking performance standards that should be considered? So first is a very broad question. And then two and three are, so if this is potentially compatible with the city, well, then what does it look like? How do we, how do we address the concerns that staff has? But then also concerns that property owners and operators have, given that they've been able to operate this type of business for well over 30 years. So that's, that is our presentation. And of course, you know, myself, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Caston Day, we're all here for questions and happy to help facilitate discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Centenario and, and Mr. Johnson, Mr. Caston Day. Appreciate that. Let's start with questions, because I have some. And I'm sure my fellow colleagues also have some. Commissioner Cunningham, let's start with you.
Thank you, Chair. I have questions for every member of staff that presented.
Come on up.
Planning Supervisor Centenario, would you like to start?
Sure.
So on the, on the outreach of community members, I, I might have missed it. Were there any hotels engaged in this outreach since some of this proposed changes would affect them?
Sure, certainly. Chair Albrecht, Commissioner, we did not reach out to individual hotels. What we did was we reached out and met with the Executive Director of the Bloomington Tourism and Travel and Tourism Group, or BTT. And they are essentially an advocacy group for the hotel industry. So they work with hotels on a daily basis, they communicate with each other. And BTT does a lot of surveys on the health of the Bloomington hospitality market. They keep track of room nights, you know, how many rooms are being occupied on a given night over the course of years. So they, they review trends. So really, we, we thought BTT was a good proxy, if you will, for the hotel industry.
Excellent. Second question for you, Planning Supervisor Centenario. Early on in the presentation, you discussed, I believe it was Park and Fly's development plan, when you were talking about their use permit, I can't remember if it's interim or conditional, and how ultimately, you know, the ramp was built for a future office use. I understand why that is, that plan is probably not moving forward. But can you describe a little bit more about the, what that plan was and if any of it is still feasible? Or feasible in the, the eyes of, I guess, have you seen anything from the user recently?
So I anticipated that that question might come up. And Chair Albrecht and Commissioner. So this, this plan was approved pre-pandemic. And so that was, we, we tried to, I don't know if incentivize is the right word, but nudge, gently nudge the operators to slowly redevelop remote airport parking facilities. We, we knew that these facilities, and we're talking about over 12 acres for each site, they're not going to develop at once. So our idea, the theory was to develop these sites in phases. And so each time an interim use permit was requested and approved, that would be accompanied by a development phase. Great in theory, it didn't work. So Park Rosa Development, that, that owns the Park and Fly property, you know, to their credit, they hired architecture engineering team, developed a really attractive apartment building. It was approved. You can see in this, this is the preliminary development plan where it showed three other future phases. Obviously, future phases don't have as much detail. And they submitted permit, building permit applications. And before that permit was issued, there was a lot of uncertainty regarding the price of the development. And so they put the brakes on the development and it just never regained any momentum. And so, you know, the property owner has, you know, identified cost concerns, you know, related to pandemic, uncertainty on financing, as in a variety of other similar reasons for why that project no longer is viable.
Understood, thank you. All right, Planning Supervisor Caston Day. Do we happen to know, we, we talked about the, the high-density residential, the HXR zoning? What was the zoning at the time that these operators, you know, took, started working on these? And I'm sorry if I'm playing stump the planner.
No, no, that's good, Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cunningham, that is a good question. And I'm not sure, back in the, the nineties, I don't know, Planning Manager Johnson, if you have any.
Consider us stumped.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, it's good.
If this is a study session, if we could have that for the next.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That'd be good to know.
I can likely find that information.
Chair and Commissioner Cunningham, I have it somewhere and I can get it for you in a second. I just have to locate it in my notes here, but I mapped out the whole thing.
Okay.
Commissioner Cunningham, it, interestingly, I believe at least one of the properties was Zone CS1. One of the properties that we discussed earlier in the agenda. The reason I believe that is because the, the original ordinance that amended the code to allow remote airport parking was in the CS1 and CO1 districts.
Thank you.
Chair Commissioner Cunningham, that's correct. It was 1986, so the, added to the CS1 and CO1 districts in 1986. And then the temporary conditional use permits started issuing in 1998 for Park and Fly and then 1991, I believe, for Park and Go. So that's how they started. And then they were rezoned to HXR in 2005. So that's, brings us to where we are now.
Thank you, Mr. Toski. All right, Chair, two more questions if, if I'm allowed to.
Absolutely, go for it.
Thank you. Planning Manager Johnson, you mentioned some guidance from Met Council about density of housing units per acre in these types of areas. Is that a mandate from Met Council or guiding? I just wanted to make sure that if it was something that needed to happen or if it was a suggestion.
Yeah, Chair Commissioner Cunningham, it's not a mandate in so much as the Met Council reviewing, unless there would be a comprehensive plan amendment to a specific project type. They are not reviewing the city's development applications on a case-by-case basis. What they are doing is reviewing the city's land use guidance that is applicable to the underlying sites. And so those have minimum expectations around development intensity, typically in the form of density, residential density. But also in the sake of commercial or non-residential uses, the underlying zoning that, that deploys or connects with the land use guidance has minimum FAR requirements. And so you might have a planned development or sites that have a, a fair amount of intensity or floor area ratio on one portion of the site and have a lower portion on the other, and it kind of balances. And that's been an approach that Bloomington has used successfully over time, I would argue. But no, the Met Council is not reviewing our development applications. Where they review our plan is at the future land use guide plan level. What land use categories are you applying to these sites and what are the density expectations? So that's what connects with their guidance in the transportation policy plan around minimum 25 units per acre average density within a half mile of a station area, soon to be 35 units per acre, so.
All right, and, and last one for now. Thank you, Chair. When, when the South Loop District Plan was in the works and ultimately adopted, were most businesses in the, the South Loop District area engaged in that kind of, that work to push that plan forward? Can you speak a little bit about that? I, again, I apologize if I'm playing stump the planner.
Yeah, Chair, Chair Commissioner Cunningham, that's certainly something we can report back to you in much better detail. But similar to any effort along the comprehensive plan and a district plan, there certainly would have been a lot of avenues to engage with the public in a variety of different ways about the district. Absent those specific details in front of me right now, I'd prefer to report back to you and I can be more precise about what the city's efforts were. And, and none of the staff presenting to you before this evening were working with the city in 2012.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, I have a question. I'm going to sneak in here because I want to play. We've had conversations about South Town and issues on sewer capacity. Mr. Johnson, you mentioned sewer capacities here and planning for the future of higher density. Has that sewer, has the increase in sewer capacity already happened? So we're ready to go and development's ready to happen? Or would there need to be additional infrastructure put in, increased, something or other in order to see that, that level of higher density?
Chair Albrecht, I believe there is adequate sewer capacity available to this portion of the South Loop and the South Loop District. Overall, I would defer the, the specifics to City Engineer Julie Long. I don't know if she can be promoted in the WebEx. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Hi, Chair, Planning Commissioners. We have done several sewer capacity projects already in the South Loop. There are a few that are remaining that do depend on if the development continues to happen at the rate that is projected, including one that would have to go under Trunk Highway 77.
Thank you, that's helpful. My other question, which you may have extra slides on, but I should have asked this in advance. What does 1,200 parking stalls in a structured parking look like in comparison to surface parking? And how much area does that actually? I mean, I know it's, it depends, you could go super high or whatever. But generally, 1,200 stalls, what does that look like in structured parking versus in the 12-point-whatever acres in a service parking lot?
Chair Albrecht, we have a, a pretty good sample, and that's the Park and Fly parking structure. That's about 1,100. So I, you know, we could, we could give you the footprint of that, take a measurement. But you can see it's, you know, it, it's a, it's a substantial footprint.
Sure.
Certainly. You know, this, this parking structure is only a few levels. You know, certainly parking structures get taller. And that height could be a, potentially accommodated within the South Loop District. At some point, you run into operational problems and, you know, convenience and then even airport height limits. But certainly, you know, there's, there's potential to have some, some height for a parking structure. But, you know, this is about an 1,100 stall ramp.
So roughly half the amount of area, maybe less?
Yeah, a, a third to 50%.
Okay.
Maybe.
Sure. That's helpful, thank you. Commissioner White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure who the question is for, so you all can take a swing at it, whoever wants it. I have two questions. The first one, I'm, I think I know the answer, but I'm just curious. Is there off-site lot parking, airport parking outside of the South Loop anywhere in Bloomington? Or is it just currently restricted to the, the facilities you mentioned specifically tonight in the South Loop?
Chair Albrecht, Commissioner White, there are no remote airport parking facilities that we know of. And if there are, then they're operating illegally.
Okay. I'm not aware of any, I just was curious if.
You know, there's, there's always the chance that there's some under-the-counter remote airport parking at hotels. But we, we're just not familiar with what that could be.
And my second question is, I'm curious, did you do any kind of rate comparison on what the cost is to park at an MSP lot versus parking at an off-site parking lot? I'm just curious what the difference in cost is for folks who have to pay to park at one or the other.
Sure. Commissioners, generally the, the cost, we can't give you a precise number, but generally the cost to park at the airport is, is more. And, and so there is an incentive to use a remote airport parking facility. You lose a little bit of the convenience, just because if you're on airport, it's, you know, pretty close. But there, there is a cost savings. I, I couldn't tell you what percentage. I'm sure, you know, we could, we could research that and get a more precise answer for you. But given the demand that we see at the remote airport parking facilities, it must be substantially enough because they're full.
Madam Chair, I, I would appreciate just getting at least some rough numbers. I think that would be an interesting. I think that would be an interesting statistic to, to look at.
To piggyback kind of on that, what anecdotally, it seems like all the aerial images we have seem like there's a lot of cars in those lots. Would you say that's very typical of a typical, you know, very typical that it's very parked there? Or are there downtimes? Is it cyclical? Any idea there?
Yeah, Commissioners, there, there is some seasonality, certainly. You know, I suspect that your spring break, MEA, typical travel weekends, you know, if it's busy at the airport, chances are it's going to be busier for the remote parking facilities. But generally speaking, their occupancy, vehicle occupancy in their lots is exemplary, if you want to use those terms. But, you know, the, the percentage isn't something that, isn't data that we're privy to.
Thanks. Commissioner White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess I've just, similar to, I'm wondering if there's, like, there's an occupancy rate for hotels. I'm wondering if we have occupancy rate for, you know, the, the parking ramps at MSP and, and for the, the parking, off-site parking facilities, if there's any ability to get that data at all.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. We, we did get some occupancy information from MAC, but it doesn't really answer the question directly.
If not, I understand, but if, if it's possible, it'd be, it'd be nice to have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks.
Commissioner Isa.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. My question, a couple of questions and a follow-up question maybe. Was the annual, or the number of annual passenger rate of MSP Airport comparative to other cities with, you know, similar annual passenger rates? Was that also essentially compared? And it, did it, did the data show that if it's more restrictive or less restrictive in terms of allowing these types of parking?
Yeah, Commissioner, we, we didn't try to evaluate like a relationship between passenger volume and the regulatory structure. I think that would be, would be a very difficult relationship to study. So we just more qualitatively evaluated what we felt were similar, I guess, geographic situations as in terms of like the built structure or bill form around an airport. But no, just to answer your question, we did not evaluate like passenger volume.
Okay, yeah, because I think that'd be interesting, because like, for example, I saw Dallas on there and like, DFW is, I believe, the second most, you know, annual passenger rate. But it's doubled the size of the Twin Cities in terms of population, roughly. So that'd be interesting to look at, but I, I guess my follow-up question is, and I, I saw that there's like, Met Council has like a 35 unit per acre limit. And if we were to, and if that, that were to be, you know, if there were to be a residential, residential units built on these lots, and let's say you were to take 10 acres of that, I'm not developing anything, but let's say you're to take 10 acres of that, 12 acres and develop. And I don't have the surface area data here, but let's hypothetically speaking, right? That'd equal like 350 units, and if you're to times that by 1.5 cars each unit or, you know, family unit, that'd equal 525 cars going in and out or daily or, you know. So when you compare that to, for example, the Park and Fly that has a surface or has maximum lots of 2,000, 2,000, basically roughly 2,000, 2,059. What, how much of that do you, I guess, maybe personally or the environmental division think it's, it's, it's a difference on environmental and traffic and things like that?
Commissioner, you're asking like the, just the traffic impact that would be generated between like a residential development and a airport parking facility?
Yeah, with those num, yeah, yeah, roughly, because I know one of the biggest things that was highlighted on there, I believe, in bold was like environmental and traffic impact, so.
Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, Commissioner, when we have redevelopment, there are newer or modern environmental standards at play, namely stormwater management. The stormwater management rules or regulation in the 80s was just not anywhere near what it is today. And so, you know, we're not engineers, but generally speaking, you can, you would anticipate a much more rigorous stormwater management system as part of a new development compared to what's existing on site today. In terms of the traffic that's generated, I mean, we, we did not do like a traffic study as part of our airport study. But as part of new development, that's something that our team is constantly reviewing. What is the anticipated generation and can city streets handle that, that traffic demand? Would you, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Chair, Commissioner Isa, if I may add just a little bit to that is certainly from, excuse me, I have a frog in my throat. Certainly from Met Council's perspective, they're looking for the development of transit-supporting uses around transit. So while a typical household, just on the single-family side, might generate 10 trips per day, a multifamily unit, a little bit less than that. If a site is well-served by transit, suffice to say it's going to have less vehicle trips because people are able to utilize that transit in close proximity to get where they need to go. So that, that also informs reductions in parking requirements within our zoning code and flexibility that the city has supported in the past. So I think just bottom line from a policy perspective, I mean, just evaluating the kind of environmental efficacy or performance of these different uses, residential or mixed use that's in close proximity to transit is going to have, is going to be a more efficient land use from the perspective of transit utilization. Certainly, there could be remote airport parking facilities that integrate with transit as well. That's not how the two current operations operate in terms of offering shuttle service. But that's not, they wouldn't be precluded from utilizing transit, certainly. I don't believe their customers are either if they desire to. I believe most take shuttles, but the point being is that's just kind of another way to think about the environmental impact, I suppose, of these different land uses.
No, that makes total sense. Thank you for that. Thank you both for that insight. Last final question, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, is, is there, is there a study or data on if there's already adequate parking in both Terminal 1 and 2, like compared, comparative to the annual passenger rate?
Do you recall what the study, the study said?
Yeah, Chair Albert, Commissioner Isa, yeah, the 2040 long-range plan for the airport, I think they kind of have estimated that I, you know, I don't recall off the top of my head what the, the numbers are, but I know that report dived into it and there was like a technical memo from Kimley Horn that was included in the packet or linked in the packet, I believe, too, that kind of touches on some of that. So I would say maybe just anecdotally in like the discussion that we had with MAC, I know they've identified like wanting to expand parking at Terminal 2 as they anticipate more, I guess, departures and arrivals in, in Terminal 2 and wanting to provide more parking there. And then just the reality of that the green and gold lot is kind of reaching its end of useful life and is going to need to be replaced also kind of necessitates for them to think about some other ways because it is pretty landlocked and where they can expand around Terminal 1 and kind of thinking about what, what they can kind of do in the interim as they're working to redevelop some of that. So I guess I can just talk in general sense like that and, but don't have specific numbers.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question, Mr. Johnson, about Commissioner Isa's question regarding, let's say theoretically, multifamily was on that parcel, not even multifamily. Let's say that the Park and Fly or Park and Go or whoever would utilize transit versus utilizing a shuttle. Would they then not have to pay the amount to the airport regarding trips? Do we know?
Chair Albert, I would defer to Mike and, I, I will answer the question, but they can correct me if I'm wrong. But if you're not sending shuttles, you're not paying a per shuttle fee on that basis, so. Yes, that theoretically, but I assume that that is built into the cost of their package.
Sure. Just curious. All right, let's get to the questions, because this is a study item and I know you're looking for feedback and guidance from us. Let's start with the first question and discuss long-term vision and goals of both the comp plan, South Loop District Plan, and to what degree is remote airport parking compatible? I will kick us off. I don't think it's compatible at all. And I, that doesn't mean that it isn't a valid use and that doesn't mean that it doesn't have, obviously, a high level of need, want, demand, all of that within the city. It doesn't negate any of that, but does it, is it compatible with the city's long-term vision and goals? I think the city council by not giving, I can't remember which one it was, the extension on the interim use permit was a very clear sign, at least to me, that it doesn't seem like there's compatibility there with where we want the future to be for the city of Bloomington and particularly South Loop. Now, that being said, I've, I've said this multiple times in my time here, but we should not let perfection get in the way of progress either. And so, for example, when we're talking about the Lindell Avenue retrofit plan, yes, do we want higher density? Do we want walkability? Yes, we want all of that on Lindell Avenue. But right now, the market, or at least recently, the market within the last five years has called for self-storage, at least for one self-storage facility. And is that ideal? No. Does that work within the district plan? No. But there is design standards that make it a lot more appealing and a lot more friendly to a walker along Lindell Avenue. It's one of the things that I think I'm most proud of being on this commission of my time. And I think that though it is not compatible, it, it still has value. And so I think that's where I'm, that's where the rub is for me is value in terms of value to our community, to people who live in our community, to the value to our, our economy, our tax base, all of that, that is valuable. Is it compatible? I don't think so. Any other thoughts? Commissioner Cunningham?
Thank you, Chair. I, I agree, you know, as the, the comprehensive plan and South Loop District Plan are written, it's not super compatible, but I echo your, don't let perfect get in the way of, what was your exact wording? Sorry, Chair, you're taking a drink, but.
Don't let perfection get in the way of progress.
Exactly. And so I, you know, I, I like the kind of that, that matrix of what, what our options in the future would be and, and kind of who they help, who they hurt, and, you know, my, one of my mottos in life is you don't get what you deserve, you get what you negotiate. So I think that having, you know, kind of meeting in the middle with a user that's an established business in the city that's providing tax base, jobs, and a service to the community in both Bloomington and in the region at large, I, I think we can meet somewhere in the middle. Might, we might not be, no one might walk away happy, but we'll, we'll at least move forward as opposed to being in this moratorium. Thank you.
I'm going to make one other comment on moratoriums. I don't like them. It's hard. They're hard, because then we have to, we are in a time dependent to be making on some sort of decision and then we're making decision based on little tweaks, for example, for self-storage. That moratorium just basically turned into another moratorium in my, from my perspective, because there's tiny little things that you, you place, tiny places you can actually do self-storage as of right now and those are probably not very feasible. So moratoriums. But the one thing that I was thinking about was the use of interim use permits or conditional, you know, temporary conditional use permits. I think the city needs a better process on what interim actually means, because it's confusing. You have a conditional use permit or a temporary conditional use permit that has been renewed however many times, 15 times. That's, to me, that is not very temporary. It doesn't feel temporary to me. It doesn't feel interim to me. And so if this was a real, if this was a real goal of the city, this is where we wanted to go, which I do think it is, it says it in the comprehensive plan, it says it in the South Loop, South Loop Plan, there needed to be a cap on it. We needed to have said, yeah, we can give you an interim use permit. It can be this period of time and maybe you can extend it once. So you can have it for 10 periods, 10 years or whatever it happens to be. But someone once told me that a slow or, let's see, a fast, no, is better than a slow yes. And this feels a little bit like that to me, where we're saying like, well, yeah, you can, kind of. So I think that, that's where I'm at in terms of, is it compatible? No. Is it what we want for the South Loop Plan? No. But we also wanted a grocery store and it didn't really work out there either. So where could it be accommodated? I think it could be accommodated where it is. But I think it needs to be higher density. I think we need to be seeing structured ramps. I know that that is not ideal for the person who's doing a Park and Fly and then they have to get their suitcase and roll it down and do all that jazz and I understand that's a pain. But we want to allow space and breathing room for the development to actually happen. And if we aren't doing anything right now to kind of put that forward or at least moving in that direction, then we're basically in the same place that we were by saying, yeah, you can kind of operate here. Sorry, I'm, I don't need to be adding more, but anyone else? Commissioner White?
These things are so difficult. I think the answer to the first question is, is clearly that a big old empty parking lot or even a parking lot full of cars in the middle of the South Loop is not what we want for the South Loop. We aren't making any more land in Bloomington. We are hemmed in. We've got what we've got. We have a responsibility to develop it in a way that is, you know, responsible to the citizens and the people who want to live here, to the businesses that want to do business here, to the environment that we are stewards of. And those things don't always provide easy answers in how we balance them, and this is one of those times. But I also respect that these are responsible businesses who have operated in good faith for 30 years. And it's not fair to change the rules, even if you have said for 30 years that we're probably going to change the rules someday. So I, I hope that we can move forward and that there's some way to continue to work through some redesign, some improvements, some way to increase the, and improve the use of the land to not just be a big paved lot. Because I think that's to the benefit of the neighborhood, to the benefit of the businesses. And, and frankly, I do believe that off, remote airport parking is compatible. Just the way we're doing it isn't compatible, and that's, that's the rub. Because I don't think that the airport should have a monopoly on parking at the airport. So I think there should be other options for people who need to get to the airport and don't want to pay or aren't able to pay the higher price to park there. And I'm glad that there are options, a variety of options, including the, the lots and the air, you know, the hotels and the. and the park-and-rides and whatever else we can come up with to make it easier and more equitable and economical for people to take advantage of the airport. I'll stop there.
Commissioner Isa.
Yeah, I'll throw something in there, too. Well, to answer the first question objectively, you know, the comprehensive plan is pretty straightforward and South Loop District Plan. And the answer to that question is no, it doesn't. It's just the reality, you know? If, you know, if you take a deep dive into that, I think most people would come to the same answer. But I do think that having the flexibility for... Whether it's residents, tourists, having the cheaper option, that's not too far from the airport, of course, is a good thing. I guess I didn't answer this... Maybe that answered the second question. But that's kind of my overall take with that. And I would like to see more data on the impact on those specific highlighted portions, especially like the environmental and traffic impact if these lots or park-and-fly, park-and-go lots were to stay. And so, versus if they were not doing their... You know, it would be mostly residential or mixed-use or whatever the case may be. I think that would be really helpful to... Yeah. So I guess I'm kind of in the middle. But yeah, that's my overall take, yeah.
Mr. Johnson.
Chair Albrecht, can I make a suggestion that might help support, facilitate your conversation in consideration of the options? Mike, do you have the ability to pull back up the policy options slide?
Oh, great idea.
Thank you.
I was just about to ask that.
Thank you.
Rethinking this slide?
The chart, I think.
The color-coded table, thank you. We certainly can bring up the slide related to performance standards for that portion as well.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. Kind of as I'm looking at this, I'm, you know, I'm looking at the full packet. I'm really enthused by Exhibit 5 from the packet, which is the park-and-go plan. I think kind of making it a mixed-use development, you know, but still having the parking, which is the core business model of the owner and operator of the site. I think that that's a good middle ground. And I'm leaning, you know, if I was to... If you said, "We need to pick one of these tonight," I'd be wanting to talk a lot about probably leaning more towards number four. But number three could be... An argument could be made for it. But kind of going back to the moratorium interim uses, things like that, I'm against number two. I'm against number five because it kind of goes directly against the... Or excuse me, it goes directly against... Number five goes directly against kind of the idea of the city being in a positive relationship with businesses operating in the city. And number one kind of goes directly against the comprehensive plan. And so I think it's three or four is kind of the unhappy middle ground we need to probably find. Thank you.
I totally agree. I think three and four are sort of the reasonable options. And I saw the Rosa Development and then saw the extension of the Rosa Development and then the extension of the Rosa Development. And I loved that project. I thought it was... I thought the design was phenomenal. I thought it maintained the use that was on the site so that they could continue doing business. I thought it was reasonable to have this slow roll of development milestones. Like Mr. Censionarios, it didn't work. But I liked it. I liked the idea of it. I thought that... And here's where I'm a little concerned about sort of the conditional use performance standards or development milestones or whatever we put a name to it. Something always kind of gets in the way. And I think that's where we have to be really careful about what those performance standards are and how we define them. Because, I mean, when we were talking about that, we were talking about, you know, lumber prices skyrocketing. I can't remember all the different things that were skyrocketing, but it was crazy. Pricing was insane. And now we're on the cusp of potential tariffs, right? And so, there's uncertainty. And that's... I understand that that's sort of the development world, and that's kind of the risk that some people really like. Not for me, but some people really like. But we kind of at least have to hold some feet to the fire to say like, "I understand that things might change, but here's what you have to do." And I think that that gives people at least the parameters of what we're... What the working... What they can and can't do very clearly versus sort of the slow, "Okay, we'll approve this. Well, then we'll do this, and then we'll do this. But maybe we'll stop." So now I'm kind of going back on my... My vote to extend the project. Commissioner White.
Madam Chair, I... Well, I think there's... I think there's two different things here. I think there's the businesses that are already operating, and then there's the potential for future. And I think that while I want to be respectful and work with the businesses that are already operating and try and find a happy solution there, I don't want to see more open lot, you know, parking lot, off-site parking. I think that would be a mistake. So I do think that if we're going to look at a policy, I think that for new development, I think the direction that was discussed of it's a, you know, it's a conditional use where you have extra parking spots, sure. You know, let somebody who's going to the airport rent it out for you. You have, you know, a little extra room in your parking garage. You have a little extra room in your, you know, your hotel parking facility. Not a lot, but you know, something that's used for other purposes, and this is just a little, you know, side business. You know, I'm more comfortable with that, and I think that that's the kind of development that we're talking about, particularly in the South Loop. I think that's sort of a separate conversation than how we work with the existing businesses who would be then out of compliance if we pass that kind of a policy moving forward. And I think it's just good to acknowledge that. And I'm not sure what the solution to that is, but, you know, I think it's, you know, it is two different things, so.
Chair, Commissioner White, if I may. An approach the city's taken in the past, you know, a couple times, and Mr. Johnson be able to educate the record better than I, but treating established businesses as a different use classification or with no performance standards or minimal as opposed to newly established, where there's performance standards, CUP, things like that that might have to happen. So that's been done in the past. I don't... I make no opinion on whether that's good planning practice. Mr. Johnson be able to kind of educate that. But we've done that, just so you know. That's kind of talked about as an option on the right, but that's happened before, so.
Just for the record, I'm not really a fan of grandfathering, but I do understand that sometimes that's what it's traditionally called, I think, in the notes. But I know sometimes it happens.
Mr. Johnson.
Chair Albrecht, and all... The development history is more complicated in this case for these two existing operators. So I'm going to set that to the side for just one second just to more illuminate this concept that Attorney Towsky is talking about. But for those around the board a little bit longer, we went through some... We established a new zoning district called the Transitional Industrial Zoning District. Certainly, there's some existing uses that are industrial in nature that you would want to allow them to continue to thrive, have the ability to expand or renovate over time. If they were a non-conforming use, they would not be allowed to do so. They effectively would be frozen with a substantially equivalent use and facility as they... As how they operate today. And so, Mr. Towsky is correct that in some circumstances, Bloomington has created separate use classifications for uses that are in existence by such-and-such date, typically associated with the adoption of an ordinance. So that certainly is something that is an option here. I think Mike in his presentation indicated that we recognize that the performance standards for these two different types of airport parking facilities may be beneficial or appropriate depending on the appetite or the policy direction and guidance by the Planning Commission and City Council. So if that's feedback that you wish to deliver to us, that's helpful as we contemplate trying to craft a policy in the form of an ordinance that is reflecting your and City Council's guidance. I guess what... And that might be a good transition to performance standards because the devil's always in the details of what your expectations would be for either existing facilities or new facilities. But I think for the purposes of keeping the momentum of the discussion, perhaps you can provide staff broad guidance in terms of one of these policy options, either as a totality or as it pertains to those two different scenarios as I spoke about. And then we could steer the conversation to performance standards.
Commissioner White.
Then I guess I'm kind of leaning towards number four.
Yeah, I'm kind of in that bank, too. Anyone else? Commissioner Cunningham.
I agree. I think number four is probably the path we should start down. And then if some... If something changes in findings, you know, address it later. But I think number four is our best bet for right now. Are we still answering question number two at all?
I think we're off the questions and on to...
I just want to say... I want to get this in the record, Ms. Brown, that I think that papering the use of hotels using airport parking within city code is a good idea. Because right now, it's just a gray area, correct? So just wanted to make sure that was clear direction.
Agreed. I'm on board with that, too.
I'm leaning more towards the less restrictive. Can't come up with one number, but I definitely agree with, you know, the city's comprehensive plan and the South Loop Plan as well. I just think the best... My opinion, I believe coming up with a way for these parking companies that have been there, whether you want to call it grandfathered in, for them to... For the city to push for development, but at the same time, for them to be able to keep as many parking stalls as possible, you know? And I'm coming from the... Thinking about it from the consumer end as well and affordability. So that's my... That's where I stand with that.
Chair Albrecht, would it be helpful if we transitioned to the slide on performance standards?
Yes, that would be great.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. So again, just to provide a summary, if I may. Chair Albrecht, you know, these are things that are somewhat interchangeable in ways. They're things that can have different levels of compliance or are very much focused on the detail of what the minimum or maximum expectation of the city would be as it pertains to some of these standards. So parking structure location. I mean, I think that one is more self-explanatory. You know, where does these uses feel more appropriate? Minimum development area. Staff made a recommendation around 50% of the site should be made available for future development. That's just where our initial recommendation steered us. Limitations on surface parking. Mike indicated and shared that, you know, there's always going to be some need, whether it be quick-access parking or drop-off areas or some of these types of things. That's typically a standard that we see in some of the other communities we studied. Design standards, parking structures, I feel that's pretty self-explanatory. And again, ties back to the district plan's emphasis on creating a sense of place within the South Loop. Several of the more recently constructed parking structures in South Loop have fairly effective architectural features incorporated into them, including the SIC ramp that's under construction right now. And then just the parking piece. Certainly, as Mike indicated, some of these uses more on the hotel side, but just demonstrating that you have adequate parking supply in order to be doing this use. And obviously, that goes up and down. And I know some users have pretty effective data and way to track that. Some have less so. And so, getting to a point where, you know, the city is comfortable or confident in the supply of airport parking that they're talking about, and what is the process to demonstrate that effectively? Those are the ones that we were most focused on in our recommendations.
Mr. Johnson, just to be clear, we're talking about performance standards for existing or potentially new development?
So thank you for the... Thanks for the clarification. Standards along these lines could be applied to both. They could be selected and parsed out where you think they're most appropriate depending on those two use scenarios that I talked about. Certainly, as I spoke about the goals of the comp plan and the district plan, we're trying to maximize the efficiency of land use as much as we can and achieve the city's development goals otherwise. So that's kind of where our advocacy and our direction went. But we welcome your guidance and feedback on what you think is most appropriate.
Commissioner Isa.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So if you include, like, if you take one of these parking lots or both, and you add on the minimum development area of 50%, and then you have a limit of surface area parking, right? How much, if there is data on this, how much would that decrease in terms of percentage, the max amount of parking stalls? Or, yeah, parking lots, I guess? And this... My second requirement... Our second question is, is there a height requirement in that, in, I guess, I know it's two different locations, but generally for like parking garages in that area?
Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Isa. I think the... I'll try to answer your question succinctly. The intensification of parking in a structure, I think, could lead to more supply in terms of stalls than... Much more supply than what the two facilities have today. So for example, if you take a look at park-and-go... I'm sorry, park-and-fly. Let me just get to that slide.
I wonder how often someone makes a reservation at one and they go to the other one. That's what I'm wondering.
Sure it happens.
Because I can't keep them apart myself.
So I think the Park-and-Fly site is a good example of what... Of how you can intensify parking. So you have the surface lot, you know, that takes roughly 2/3 of the site. And that's about 1,100 parking stalls. And then you have the parking structure, much smaller in area, and it's roughly equivalent in terms of the amount of parking that can be accommodated. And that parking structure could be taller. It's not because it was supposed to have an office building on top of it. So that parking was intended to serve an office building, not to be a remote airport parking facility. So I think to answer your question, I don't envision if the number four option is selected and these operators build parking structures, I don't think we're going to see a reduction in the parking supply that they have. I think we're just going to see significantly more than what they have today.
Yeah, thank you so much for that clarification. That's good.
Yeah, that was a bit of my... Why I asked that question, too, because I do think that there's potentially for... And I know that building a structured parking facility is not cheap. I understand that. But I know that there's potential for that to be as lucrative, if not more lucrative. I would like to have my car covered in the winter for that... Those specific sites. Mr. Johnson.
Chair Albrecht, thanks. I was just going to make a clarify... I mean, height limits in the South Loop are site-specific because of the airport height limits. But just, you know, generally speaking, the area that we're talking about, you know, you can build a structure of 150 to 170 feet in height. So that's a substantial number of stories. So I just wanted to provide that data point.
You know, just again, there are a number of office towers in this area, and I can't imagine a parking structure going to that height. Because then you just lose efficiencies.
Sure.
And no one's going to want to, you know, And no one's going to want to, you know, drive up eight levels and then have to go down an elevator with their luggage. So, there's, there's some, I'm sure there's a happy, happy point in terms of height.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Thank you, Chair. Could we pull the, the potential performance standards back up? I just wanted to, I've been rambling a ton tonight, and I wanted to just kind of rapid fire on these. So, as far as what performance standards I would, would like the city to explore, parking structure location, I think that's a, a yes, we should at least guide that, you know, closer proximity to the 494 corridor in this, specifically talking about the two existing operators. Minimum development area, I think that that makes sense as well to, to guide that future development. Limitations on surface parking, I would say it'd be very beneficial to maybe get feedback from our operators to make sure that we're not limiting the number of shuttles to then ruin their service where they can't, if they have six shuttles and then we have, we can say, we can have five parking spots outside, it might be a problem. Enhanced interior design standards is something that I, I want to caution staff to not be too heavy-handed with. You, Chair, you made the point earlier that parking garages are not free, and Commissioner Isa, you've made some comments about how this is a more affordable option for those going to the airport to park. If we have blanket mandated facade requirements on the parking structures, or mandated renewable energy or solar, wind power requirements on these structures, then that would raise the cost to build the structure and likely raise the cost of parking. I'm not trying to make an assumption about the business of the operators, but that just seems to make logical sense to me. So I would say, I, I think some making of the place, trying to fit this into the, the South Loop District is a good idea, but try not to be too heavy-handed with, I guess, recommendations. The demonstrating access parking supply makes total sense. More intense, dense development, I think by the nature of what we're asking the operators to do, that comes with the, the territory proximity to MSP Airport. Yes, I think we're kind of already there as well, and then enhanced stormwater management, we'd be, should be meeting any applicable current city codes, so any new development would need underground detention, or stormwater ponding, or, you know, whatever would need to be required for stormwater management and then landscaping. I guess that last one was kind of a question, would that be the case, where we'd need to meet, if any new build needs to meet current code and zoning standards, correct?
Chair, Commissioner Cunningham, that's correct. The, the South Loop District Plan talks about low-impact design techniques and ways to manage stormwater in a more sustainable way, put simply. So I think some of those things would be, we would look back to the district plan, connect with our stormwater resource engineers, get, try and get some ideas for them of ways to do that. That's, that's frankly, in a more sustainable manner, just in support of the district plan. On the point about more intense, dense development, I just want to be more precise about kind of what that would contemplate, as if you had remote airport parkings on a portion of the site, then the minimum FAR expectation potentially would be increased as a trade-off to that on the remaining portion of the, the site. So that's something to think about, we didn't land at a specific number. We talked about some numbers, but I just don't recall as how much detail we got into beyond just the premise.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Johnson, I'm not trying to play stump the planner, what is the current HXR FAR requirement? I don't remember off the top of my head, I'm sorry guys, I've been doing it a lot tonight.
That's okay.
I don't recall the FAR requirement offhand. What I can say is that the HXR District does require a certain level of intensity already. It requires there to be a residential component of 30 units an acre, which is, which is fairly dense development. And then, gosh, we can, we'll, we'll get to the FAR number, I just don't remember it offhand.
I, I should know, I, I...
What is it? Okay, one, FAR is 1.5, and so that's on a, that's on a per-site basis. So anytime you're getting above an FAR of one, you're, you're, there's some land use intensity. And so with the HXR District, there's even density bonuses, where you can go, you can have bonus increases in density for a variety of factors, it's like a menu of, of options. So I guess to, related to the potential performance standard, the zoning that we have in place already requires a certain level of intensity. The question is, should we try to go above and beyond that?
I, my, my feedback, kind of instantaneous feedback on that is a 1.5 FAR is, especially if we're calculating the FAR based on the total parcel, including the parking garage, then a 1.5 would be fairly dense for residential housing, or, you know, finished commercial space, if half of the site is a giant parking ramp.
And, Chair, so getting into the details, right, it, there'd be two ways we could calculate the FAR requirement. Is it the entire property, like the entire 12-plus acres? Or, let's say we have a 50% maximum dedicated to airport parking, and then 50% of the area dedicated to not airport parking. One option would be to calculate the FAR on the area that is not airport parking. So that would lead to a smaller development requirement, but if we have a floor area that's based on all 12 and a half acres, that's tremendous.
That's, that's kind of what I was getting at, that's, thank you for clarifying that way better than I could. I, I'm not sure how I feel on that, I, I guess this is the study session, we're supposed to give feedback tonight. I think if we're calculating it off the whole site, we should not go higher than 1.5. If we're calculating it off of the 50%, the proposed 50% development area, I, I would defer to Chair Albrecht on that. I, for, based on your professional experience, I guess, what would a realistic FAR be on a six-acre site? That's...
Stump Aubrey now. I, I guess, Mr. Johnson, do you have an opinion, or maybe just, what's, what's FAR of the Rosa multifamily development, I'm still playing stump the...
Excellent, excellent questions, but I don't know the answer offhand.
Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cunningham, what I would say is this, is that I think we recognize that the second approach is likely more feasible, you know, not applying it across the full site would not be fair or reasonable to any potential future development effort in terms of meeting that standard. And what I would add to that is that if you were to increase the city's expectations on the remaining development area, whatever that proportion is, you know, it has to be reasonable, it has to be something that can be reflected and successfully completed in the marketplace.
Yeah, I, I guess, thinking it through, we, we talk about South Loop all the time. I think that holding the 1.5 FAR for the other 50%, if we go down that path, would be the right move, because it would drive kind of more, it would drive less demand to kind of maximize the building footprint and the buildable area. So you could get some more accurate amenities, or, you know, kind of a garden space, things like that, that are relatively inexpensive to install in a development, but might, if, if you're building a two-story building and you meet your, or three-story, four-story building and you meet your FAR that way, then you can, you don't have to maximize your floor plate as much.
And that's, I think, what I liked about the Rosa development too, was that there was very well-thought-out green space in sort of this area that interacted with the street. So I agree with you on that, I think that makes a lot of sense, especially if we're wanting to create more pedestrian interactivity, then we need to really think about landscaping, green space, all that jazz. I agree with Commissioner Cunningham and his speed round of performance standards, I think 50% is reasonable, I, I agree, parking structure needs to be at the highway. It's a tough place to have anything, and we've seen in Bloomington, a lot of car dealerships be successful there, so why not more car uses there? I do think there should be a limitation on surface parking, I agree that, you know, talking with the, the operators to see what's, what's reasonable in that seems to be a good one. My only thought about, I'm going back to parking structure locations, my only thought about putting the parking as close to the freeway as possible, as we may come into some access issues, because those lots are kind of funky. But again, I'm not a planner, nor am I designer, nor am I developer, so, but I really think the enhanced exterior design standards, and I know Commissioner Cunningham said there was an increased amount of, of cost, I think that, but this is important. It's important in that we want South Loop to have a there there, and parking lots, structured parking lots doesn't give us a there there. Like the SIC parking lot really feels like South Loop, even though it's a parking lot, there's some design elements of it that are different than just concrete. Even the parking facility that is at the Toyota dealership, there's some design stuff that they, they did there that really is, it's much better than just concrete structure. So I don't know what those in, design standards would be, but definitely stormwater management, that's just kind of, but, and then landscaping, for sure. I think landscaping does, can do a lot that maybe your design standards don't need to Commissioner Cunningham?
Sorry, that, thank you, Chair. Just to clarify, I, I'm not against design standards for the exterior, you know, enhancements to the exterior design of parking structures, I just was trying to caution the city not to be heavy-handed to stop something from ever happening.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cunningham, you know, I think one thing I could add is, communities have really grappled with parking structures, and there is so many examples of types of design standards for parking structures. You know, as staff, your points are well-taken, you know, we don't want to regulate into oblivion, where something just becomes completely egregious. But there are some very, I think, practical design elements that we could include, so you don't have the Soviet-style concrete bunker of a parking structure that we're trying to avoid.
What I would add to that too, Chair, is that some of those elements become more important in terms of which elevation or orientation of how the structure interacts with the more active part of the South Loop.
Yeah, that's a good point. And those standards exist for multifamily too, right? We can have more of a tier two or whatever use that if we, if that is not facing the street, so I think that's important too. Any other thoughts on performance standards? Mr. Centenario, do you need any clarification from any of that? Or do you feel like...
Chair Albrecht, I think you've given us a lot of very positive guidance, but I'd, I'd want to make sure I look to Mr. Johnson and Mr. Kasten if they have any.
Yeah, I agree. I think what I'm hearing from the both of you, and certainly welcome any additional feedback on, from the other commissioners, but general support of the bolded, recommended performance standards from staff, we can certainly look at some of those other additional ones at the, the bottom of the slide. But just to clarify again, the bold, the ones in bold are the ones that staff feel are the most essential to kind of achieve the city's development goals. The only clarification I might seek is just whether or not applying these standards uniformly to all types of facilities, whether it be existing today or new, as they are moving forward, just if there's any kind of nuance between that, that's helpful guidance for us to report to the city council on as well.
Mr. Johnson? I have, I guess I have a, a clarifying element I'd like to add.
Yeah.
When, if you look at the fifth bullet, demonstrating excess adequate parking supply, that really, in my mind, relates to a new facility that doesn't exist today.
Correct.
If you have a remote airport parking facility, we're not trying to have them prove to us that they have enough supply, that's their business. This is more for when you have a variety of uses that are sharing a parking structure. That's where I feel like that type of performance standard really comes into play.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, I think that's, and, and I know you had said this earlier, but it needs to be accessory, and I think accessory to whatever use is actually there, because that's not, can't be the primary use, a surface parking lot. I don't even like a hotel surface parking lot, so it should not be the primary use. Any other thoughts? Commissioner Isa?
Yeah, when we're discussing potential new developments in regards to this, wouldn't the second-to-last point kind of X that out completely, when it comes to land? Because how much, yeah, that's, I guess, short, short way of asking. Because it's the, then to clarify, it's the proximity to MSP Airport requirement, and did staff talk about like the rough proximity in terms of miles, miles or...
Yeah, Chair, Commissioner Isa, we didn't discuss a specific distance, but what effectively, again, to the point about limiting the proliferation of the use. Okay, there's multiple ways to do that. One is by what zoning districts you allow it in, and what we're recommending to you is HXR and CX2. So that's one limiting factor. Another limiting factor potentially is, I don't anticipate either of those districts being applied to any sites outside of that area that's in the immediate location, but say for the sake of discussion it was, and there was a site that had an existing parking structure, but it's very far away, or, very is a subjective, it's far away from the airport in comparison to these other sites, do you want to set some limits around, because that's adding, you know, that's adding vehicle trips and emissions and other things, and is less sustainable the further away it is? You know, with not, Eden Prairie Southwest Transit notwithstanding. But, so that was the thinking there. Again, we don't view that as an essential component, just on the basis of where you're limiting it in the zoning districts. But if the nature of those districts ever were to change, again, I don't anticipate that, but would you want it just kind of more firmly rooted in close proximity to MSP Airport via distance, whether it be a half-mile or something along those lines? But that's something we can explore. I think the initial guidance is whether or not you think it warrants consideration, and we can do additional study on it.
Yeah, I don't think the proximity of the airport is that big of a deal if we're limiting it to those specific districts. I think we're already kind of saying that, so we're just saying it again by saying proximity.
Yeah, thank you, that makes total sense, I kind of forgot the, that, that we're limiting it to those districts to me.
Yeah, Chair, and I...
Thank you.
Thank you for this robust, it's a long discussion, staff's had many long discussions on this one, but, and I know you all have too, as well as the public. But just clarifying Bullet Four with respect to design standards, you know, there are existing parking structures in Bloomington that have expressed a desire to explore this use, it would be helpful guidance us to know what types of expectations the planning commission and city council would want to be reflected in ordinance related to existing parking structures. I, I mean, I'll look to Mike to clarify, I think we view that subcomponent or performance standard as being more reflecting on new, any new structured parking being delivered, but I welcome your view too.
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cunningham, I, the mix right of the enhancements to enhanced design are, we envision them to be for new parking structures, certainly things can be retrofitted, you know, we have mall representatives here, and I think they'd agree that East Ramp isn't an attractive piece of architecture. So there's, there, there are things that can be done, but it'd be good guidance to, to get from you if you want us to roach that issue, like trying to retrofit enhancements to existing parking structures versus new.
I don't think it's necessary, in my opinion. I think for the existing structures, if they can, you know, demonstrate that they have an excess or adequate parking supply, and we can put that to good use, I think it's to good use. The only thing that I would say is, that may trigger a landscaping review of where they have landscaping, what maybe didn't make it through the landscaping review, and can we elevate that in some way so that there's a level, maybe a level of screening? Now, I'm not going to die on my sword here with that one, but I do like the idea of it triggering at least something, a review, so that we can make sure that there is a level of landscaping around some of these structures.
To that point, Chair Albrecht, you know, one thing that happens universally is over, over time, is that landscaping dies.
Yes.
And no one replaces it.
No.
It dies, and then it just goes away.
Yes.
So we use development applications as a great opportunity to essentially require replanting in accordance with a plan that was already approved, or if they want to be creative, they can create a new plan that meets code requirements.
Yeah, I like, I, that's the one thing I really liked about, you know, being on this commission too, is just seeing that, that's really, it makes, it makes a huge difference in some of the developments. Commissioner White?
I would just add, not necessarily related to the enhanced exterior design, but in terms of the demonstrating excess adequate parking supply, the, the places where we're encouraging people to do this as a secondary, I just want to acknowledge... I just want to acknowledge that my hope is that that will be near places where folks can park and hop on the light rail or grab a bus to the airport. You know, otherwise we are, again, just adding shuttles and, and vehicle miles traveled through shuttles into the, into the mix, which isn't ideal. But I, you know, just not discouraging it, just acknowledging it, I guess, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. To clarify, it was HXR and CX2, right? So that's HXR, most of South Loop. And then CX2 is the mall Ikea, looking at the zoning map. The Thunderbird Hotel Lot that's currently vacant. And then the, I'm not sure what you would call it, the, I think the mall owns it, the lot directly to the east that's in the flight path of the runway.
Yeah, we call that the East Lot or adjoining lands.
Okay.
But yes, that's part of the mall campus and is owned CX2.
So kind of as we've been discussing, that there's, there's two, I would say, either underutilized or vacant lots right now that theoretically could be turned into airport parking pursuant to the requirements that we're discussing, that Thunderbird Hotel site and that East Flat Parking Lot. Meeting the requirements of what we're putting forth, but still could, in theory, we could be growing the airport park.
If that's the approach you want, if that's the approach you want to take. We could, if you want to give us the guidance to limit it to essentially new remote airport parking facilities in existing parking structures, that is a policy approach you could take.
Yeah, if I, Chair, if I can add a different voice to it, say it, say the same thing in a different way is just a fundamental policy decision the city needs to make if it's going to welcome new operations is whether or not they have to be limited to existing parking structures as they exist today as of the end of the moratorium adoption date of the new ordinance or whether a new development could construct new structured parking to effectively serve some portion of remote airport parking use.
Can I ask a question in a third way, slightly differently?
Yes, yes, I love a third.
So let's take the Thunderbird site as a scenario. It's owned by the Port Authority, could soon be owned by the City of Bloomington. Should the City of Bloomington get into the remote airport parking game? You know, and, and if that is, that relates to the question, do we want to allow new operators?
And if I can answer, answer Mike's question from a staff perspective, no. We don't believe we should because in furtherance of the comprehensive plan and district plan, our goal is to blunt the proliferation of the use.
But theoretically, let's just say that lot could develop into, I don't know, like a tiny boutique hotel or something and then have a structured parking lot, which I don't know why they would. But then they could say in the future, well, now I want to operate remote airport parking out of my newer, but not brand new and built specifically for remote airport parking.
Chair Albrecht, if the, if the ordinance of remote airport parking accessory to a hotel use established a maximum parking requirement for hotels, then that would set limits on how many stalls they could effectively add to a site like that.
I guess hearing all of that discourse and discussion, I, I'm in, in favor of allowing it in existing parking structures, but maybe not trying to, like you said, blunt the proliferation of this use. I think that that's a, a good path forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I think using what we have to highest and best use is a great idea. And I don't think we need a lot more of this, but maybe we do. And if we do, maybe we can find spaces that already exist rather than having to fill areas, even though that field would be great as a airport viewing park, which we've discussed many times. Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. I was saying that we, didn't we determine that that can't be an airport viewing park? Okay, good, just wanted to make sure. Got a three year old at home that's very interested in that.
Can we go back to the questions? I think we answered all your questions, but I just want to triple check. I think we did. Do we feel, Commissioner Cunningham?
One last question. Do we, so when does the moratorium end and when will we see this as a public hearing? I'm sure that there's hundreds of people watching online at home.
I think the most interested parties are in the room right now. Madam Chair, Commissioner, the exact dates of the public hearing have not been determined yet. So the date that has been determined is, we'll be going to the city council on June 16th. And then, you know, essentially asking them the same questions. We'll receive that feedback and then based on that feedback, it's, you know, we want to follow up with operators. We want to certainly have additional conversations among staff. And then we have to start crafting an ordinance that matches that feedback that we got. But in, to answer your question about the moratorium, the moratorium ends at the end of September of, of this year. And so certainly we want to give the planning commission adequate time to review that and give the city council adequate time to review that. So it's not like you must take action tonight on an ordinance. We want to give a little wiggle room. So I think, I don't know, Mr. Johnson, did we have, was it end of July potentially for a public hearing at Planning Commission? I can't guarantee any sort of dates, but.
Yeah, Chair Commissioners, we'll certainly report back on the precise schedule. We'll be very proactive in discussing the schedule with the interested stakeholders, with the public, so everyone can get a, a good and fair opportunity to participate. I was just going to report back on the precise date of the expiration of the moratorium and it's October 10th, 2025. So we have, we have to rescind and bring an ordinance forward prior to that date is our goal.
Commissioner White.
Just one comment for the record that I'm not convinced that we don't need more offsite parking, airport parking. I do agree that we should maximize the other options in existing lots that we already have, existing parking facilities we already have and that we don't need more surface lot, especially in the areas we've been talking about tonight. But I don't want to just assume that it's not a need. So I just want to give that feedback to the, to the staff.
And I think that will hopefully, if you bring back more data to the next meeting, we can have at least a sense of where the actual demand is. Okay, great. Anything else you need from us?
No, Chair.
Any other comments, thoughts?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. This item will be, as Mr. Centenario and Mr. Johnson mentioned, on, as a study item for the city council on June 16th, 2025. For folks who are in attendance and also watching, I do want to encourage you to participate in the process. I know there's the Let's Talk Bloomington site, which is still up, yep. But also submitting any sort of testimony, information, having conversations with staff. I think I would encourage anyone here and anyone in the public to do that in advance of the, the next session.
Thank you, Chair Albrecht. If I can make one clarification to that is, it is a dedicated study item meeting for the city council. So those are not held here in the city council chambers, actually held upstairs in the Hague Conference Room. For those who know the location of that. So I will certainly confirm that. Mike and I will confirm that with the interested stakeholders who potentially want to attend or participate in that meeting, the final location, which is to clarify, the Hague Conference Room.
They did not combine their meetings like we did.
No. Thank you.
Fair enough. All right. With that, that is the meeting, the May 22nd, 2025, meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.